People hit some of it as well.
I hadn't finished my last question, though. I seriously have. I'll try to keep it thirty seconds. Can I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what I was saying is that I saw in the project cost estimate, there was a component for legal and admin. And currently, I don't believe we charge those to our projects. And in addition, I didn't see anywhere for project management and some of that other overhead. And it doesn't seem like historically we have charged out for those pieces. And so it seems like those pieces definitely should be part of the cost of the project when we calculate GFCs and calculate the proportion that should be charged to growth because they are part of the cost of upgrading our system for growth is that internal staffing cost.
Okay, so if we start with the last one first, so kind of that overhead approach. Overhead is built into the rates. Rates can support capital and operations. So Sean's PM time is, of course, in the salary lines. Oh, everybody move. What happened? Is in the salary lines for operations in the 401. So it is there. It isn't specifically per project quantified, which I understand is of interest to council for total project costs, right?
It's just it's being charged to the rate pairs instead of as part of the capital cost because most of our capital costs are not rate pair type.
And that's a, so that is a differentiation in methodology. Should we want to do that, we can bring that forward. And those are those calculation costs we have, which is why the financial chapter isn't yet done. We want to have discussions to make sure we're driving the right direction on the financial chapter. So that makes sense. Legal and admin costs, Mr. Kenny has joined us. We do confer with him on construction project costs. He's been working with us on the Tall Water Main with easement and offsite issues. So they're not all the time. They are few and far between, but we do use legal representation for construction. Certainly, when we get into bid manual work, they're part of that review and the creation and reviewing all the contract items. So there is legal association to our costs. So there's that bit. I'll pick on staffing projections under notes. And I know we've talked about it when we went through budget early on, and I understand the certain discontent for the average number utilized for creating the staffing levels for water meter reading, but it is more encompassing. Sean's summary, which was on my screen here, disappeared. I'm not sure how far we want to split hairs on that. We can certainly bring this back. We want to bring it and have discussion, more time on the Cal maybe to go over elements like that. But we did talk about, you know, water meter reading as it's shown is the person collecting the data, integrating the work with the billing module, the billing folks, going out and doing rereads, move-ins, move-outs, leak checks. So there is quite a bit. Yes, we have said it is not necessarily as much as they show, but we also said the flip side, some of the numbers that are represented by our consultants, on average, are lower on other ones or higher on other ones. So again, we hire a consultant to assist us, and there are many facets of this that all integrate together. So I don't know how we estimate, you know, a ten to twenty-year program in a way that is or seems to maybe want to be consistent with today's dollar. So we may have to have a larger conversation on how we get there with those estimates. And Sean, you talked to Murray Smith about that quite a bit, so I don't know if we want to add to that since we have this. But yeah, these are the points we want to have so we can come back and have focused conversations and have the right data to discuss.
Councilmember Brudnicki.
I just wanted to comment and say that thank you for the presentation. And I think throughout the years of working with the city and the staff, that these type of long-range and large projects, from my experience, are really great staff that takes into consideration all the type of things that are being brought up. And it's because it's long range, you know, you have to see the big picture of the system. And then eventually throughout the process, you know, you could make a decision today about something, but things change and technology changes and so many things evolve as you go forward. And so I really think that the presentation was helpful and I feel very comfortable with what staff is doing, and so I'm very supportive. That's it.
Thank you.
Health member Brudnicki, on that point, like, these chapters are prescribed by Department of Health. We don't, like, we assess the topic for our individual system, right? So it's prescribed and what it looks like in its organization, but then you fill in the blanks relative to who we are, what we are, where we're going. Because, you know, we and our consultants know best about the city and its growth. We do try to be as consistent as we can with every other element, land use-wise. I mean, you have Larissa on the backend of doing land use work with planning. She's obviously on the backend of this, doing land use planning with us, trying to make sure that we are as consistent as possible. The difference here, too, is we're not only looking at UGA, we're looking at areas outside our UGA, which water service boundary, sure, low density, but there will be houses popping up here and there. And I think the point, it was six hundred and ninety people was referenced in the document from our consultants. It is ERUs, so not enough people as it said.
Mayor Protim, if I may, I don't know where you went on my screen. Oh, there you are. Yeah, and for the record, Sean Tozer, City of All Public Works. Sorry to bust into the council meeting here. So I was hoping I could just run over a couple of those items. I was trying to get bolts on so I can try to address some of those in line. So the first one, I think, councilmember Lengel had was about consensus. So what we're looking for as far as what that means is, when is this council comfortable in moving forward to next steps? And there's more information to be added to that, but that's what we're looking for is, when do we get ahead now that, hey, you know what? We've talked about this enough. We feel really comfortable. We would be ready to take the next step. And that might be with, that might not happen. It might be with everybody. It might not be with everybody. That's what we're looking for as staff, is clear direction that we're ready to take a next step. As far as there is a cost and financial plan, I know you have concerns about the overall picture of the financial strategy for the city, and I understand that. As far as for us and for how we're looking at this, this is a utility. This is a business, a line of business that is very specific that we're looking at. And I understand that council has their overarching view, so I totally understand that. I think what we benefit as is that we have some of those really good independent consultants that are looking at the financial health of this utility. Again, what that means in the overarching picture, I can't really control that as far as council is concerned. For staffing projections, that was obviously, as Steve said, a lot of that that's come up was, I know there's deeper conversations previously where there's really been looked at staff time records. So really having public works and Joe producing documentation of, hey, this is what it takes to do. And so those are the things that wrapped up that really make us feel very confident that the number's representative. Is it maybe all representative of that specific line item? Well, maybe not, but we also don't need to add, you know, ten different lines in the table to try to break down different ones. That's how we've approached it. We have a confidence that's there. And again, we talked about maybe renaming it, and maybe that's something that solves it. Chapter ten was also a discussion item, so chapter ten is not done. Nobody has it. Public Works Committee doesn't have it. Nobody else has it. I don't have it. It's something that's being worked on by FCS Group. The important part of chapter ten is not the words. The important part of chapter ten is the data and the information that was presented to this council by the financial consultant. So I understand we will not be asking you guys to move forward or take an action prior to having chapter ten, having time to review it. But what was important is all that data that FCS Group presented and had discussions on, and that is the meat of that. It's not the words, or it's not what the writing of chapter ten is. It's really all those tables that were presented at Public Works Committee and then also to this council and Cal. And then the legal admin, PM, overhead, that whole general number. So again, what we tried to talk about is methodology and what independent professionals use in the industry. And those are categories that are applied because every project or everything has something that's touched by an administrator or maybe a director or somebody else who's not involved that has other catch-all, just like meter reading, you know? You get admin legal because it catches a lot of other costs that are maybe not otherwise identified. And same with, PM is part of the construction engineering bit, which is applied a five percent kicker to those project costs and overhead, similar to what Steve had said. So that was me trying to hit all those little different items. I hope that that's at least helpful about what we're looking at. But I think that that's the approach they're really taking, especially in those project costs, is those incidental items capture that. They really should. So we don't have one that says PM, or we don't have one that says something else. It might not be titled correctly, but again, I think that's maybe part of the philosophy of what we're talking about, is we're capturing those costs, just as we are in meter reading and some other miscellaneous items. We're capturing that representative amount of work. It might not be titled appropriately or be exacting detail. But again, these are the items that the professionals in the industry, you know, FCS Group, Murray Smith, who does this for dozens and dozens of water systems, this is how they do it. And that's all I have to address those.
So Mayor, you were real gracious in providing us time. It's now seven nineteen. I know that there's probably more questions or wanting to move on, but I'm going to suggest that we adjourn our committee of the whole and take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene for council.
Yes, that sounds great.
And Steve, well, I know we have more discussion on the water system plan, so we'll be having more discussions, and I'll do a better job of trying to control our time. Well, thank you, everybody. Committee of the Whole is officially adjourned. We'll see you in five minutes for the council meeting at seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-eight PM. We have a late start due to committee of the whole discussion that went along. And with that, Clerk, would you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which stands one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty. Justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Connecting right now. Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lengel.
She's here, but on mute. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Under consent agenda, please add payroll for February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-three cents, and claims for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, through March second, twenty twenty-one, the amount of three hundred and seventy-three dollars, I'm sorry, three hundred and seventy-three, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Are there any councilmembers that wish to speak under council reports this evening? Councilmember Hoag? All right. With that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second, McHenry.
Great. We, Councilmember Napland's hand was up. Councilmember Napland, did you have something?
I also had a council report, so I just couldn't get my hand up quick enough. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approval of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, McHenry.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoag, a second by Councilmember McHenry to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have any comments from the audience this evening? And so, first of all, Clerk, did you receive any written comments?
I did not, and I've allowed the two attendees to speak if they would like to do so now.
Okay. And if you do want to speak, go ahead and unmute yourself and provide your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. I'm not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and move on to scheduled items. First up is the mayor's report. First on the agenda is a proclamation for resilience month. And this was requested that we sign on to this proclamation. So whereas, the city of Duval recognizes the importance of a community conversant in adverse childhood experiences, the effects of ACEs and toxic stress on the developing brain, and how resilience-building strategies buffer these predicted negative impacts. And whereas, the cumulative effects of such experiences over a lifespan, if ignored, are detrimental to individuals, families, and communities. And whereas, newest Washington State research suggests that building community resilience by increasing the opportunities for mutual support, hope, help, and healing, and ways to feel safe and connected within all our neighborhoods and community is beneficial. And whereas, promoting community engagement to learn more about ACEs noted as the number one chronic health epidemic in the nation by the Centers for Disease Control Prevention, and to learn how to interrupt the impact of ACEs by learning about and applying protective factors and resilience throughout our partners, agencies, schools, and families. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby recognize the importance of the coalition work of the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network, Snoqualmie Valley Cities, Friends of Youth, Encompass, YMCA of Greater Seattle, Crisis Connections, Influence the Choice, Trail Youth, Lambert House, Be Kind Snoqualmie Valley, the Supportive Community for All, Snoqualmie Fire Department, Duval Police, Eastside Fire and Rescue, and many other organizations working together. Toward a community of hope and healing and pro-ke Washington. And moving on to the report, on the legislative side, there isn't a lot to report right now. All the bills that we've been watching have been modified significantly. There are only a few that are on the floor right now for potential action. The one that dealt with transparency and public comment, House Bill thirteen twenty-nine by Representative Wicks, did pass out of the House and is in the Senate with some significant changes that make it so that it's something that our city can definitely, definitely meet the requirements of, and it's a good, it's, there's been some improvements to the bill to make it good for small cities. Beyond that, I sent council a letter on Highway five twenty-two. The five twenty-two coalition wants to send a letter to Congress to ask for federal funding for those projects that we're also requesting state funding for. And so I just wanted to see if there are any objections to me signing that letter. Normally, it's from the mayors, but in this letter, it specifically says from councils. And so I just wanted to make sure everyone had read that and make sure there were no objections so we could officially get that sent off. Okay, not seeing any objections. So moving forward, I think, you know, the conversation with the Johnston Group tonight, I do want to continue with council and hear your individual feedback over the next few days. I think that there's certainly a lot of opportunity and possibilities that may be coming our way as a result of the makeup and the leadership of our congressional representatives. Finally, on the legislative side, just wanted to make sure you all know that our capital budget and transportation budget requests were submitted. They have been accepted by our legislators, and we will stay in the loop on the process for those. I'm very optimistic that we should be able to get at least one funded, which will be of a great help, if not more. So obviously, our Third Avenue and Highway two oh three study are huge priorities, but on the capital budget side, there's some low-hanging fruit potentially with the Public Works Building and/or the Police Department. So we'll keep our fingers crossed there. The legislature is on the floor this week. Cut-off is, I can't remember if it's the sixth or the ninth, for the House of Origin, and then the process will start again in the Senate. And moving on to just normal mayor reports, just to, we had a briefing with King County Public Health this morning. Patty Hayes informed us that cases are leveling off of COVID, but the disturbing thing is that the UK variant is doubling every ten days in King County. We're, the state is still having trouble getting vaccines. In fact, I just saw a news alert tonight, there's potentially an investigation into Florida over private, private wealthy communities getting the vaccination before others, and the national distribution has not been fair and equitable in any stretch of the imagination. And Washington has definitely felt the brunt of some of that. But with the approval of the new Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine and the announcement today that Merck and Johnson &amp; Johnson are going to work together to more quickly produce a vaccine, the president did announce today that he expects that enough vaccine for the entire adult population of the United States will be done by the end of May. Then we still have the logistics of getting it out and in people's arms, but that's huge progress from where we were just a month and a half ago. So I think that's something to celebrate while still keeping our vigilance and making sure that we're continuing to follow the public health guidelines. The A W E C Board of Directors Legislative Committee was canceled the last couple of times. There hasn't been any necessary action, which kind of goes to, there hasn't been a ton to be overly worried about in the bills that are moving forward right now. On Monday, I attended a new series with Sound Cities Association. It's lunch with a councilmember. They're going through all of the King County councilmembers and got to hear from Councilmember Reagan Dunn. It was a very informative conversation, and not having had a group conversation with him before, I gained a lot of respect for the work that he's doing and the nonpartisan way in which he takes on his role as a county councilmember. We also had the PSRC Executive Board, and then this morning, we had the Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association Mayor's Meeting. Lots of talk there about some issues that North Bend and Snoqualmie are having with some of their projects. And then we have the North End Mayor's Meeting for lunch today, and the big takeaway there is from, of course, we've learned about Senator Murray's appropriations request. Senator Cantwell's forms should be out soon. And I will be meeting with Steve. Steve and Mr. Lashewski was out for a couple of days last week, and we're meeting tomorrow to discuss potential options of things that might fit within the federal appropriations process. And I think that is it. Any questions? Okay, seen none. We'll move on to Councilmember Hoag.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm on the King County Flood Control District Advisory Committee. We had our first meeting this last week. And in twenty twenty, King County passed a countywide multi-benefit motion. So what that means is they'll be including three new grant programs. They'll be addressing countywide flood issues associated with urban streams, coastal erosion flooding, culvert replacement, fish passage restoration. And the original grant program is still in place, but there'll be four grant areas. So I thought that was kind of exciting for this year coming up. And then, for those that may not know it, you can register at kingcountyfloodcontrol.org to receive notices about floods. So, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Napland?
So I was wanting to bring something forward at the Finance Committee proposal, and it occurred to me, before I bring something to committee, maybe I should let the rest of council know, you know, what I'm up to, and just to see if there was any early input. So what this has to do is trying to understand our one-time money versus our recurring money. And it's something that Councilmember Schaefer brought up at another meeting, and it got me thinking more about it. And I was looking at the year-end report, and our fund balance has just exploded. And, you know, you ask yourself, wow, you know, we're really in good financial shape. And I think in general, we are. And to stay in good financial shape, you really have to understand what revenue is one time and what revenue is something you can count on year after year. And you would want to base your operating expenses on revenue that would come in year after year. And so I had created this spreadsheet tracking construction development-type revenue over, I think, the most complete information started in two thousand and fourteen and looking forward. And so for two thousand and twenty, the general fund received over two million dollars in revenue that was directly related to development activity. And that's a really huge number, which also then makes sense. Why is our account balance growing? You know, if you look back in two thousand and fourteen, we didn't bring in two million, we only brought in two hundred and forty thousand. And so you can see there's huge swings in revenue. And anyway, so I was trying to think, you know, how do we address this? How do we keep track when we look at our, you know, financial reports? How are we doing? It's very difficult because all the money is kind of mixed together. And one thing that Director Mason has done is she's pulled out some of the development-ready revenue related to permits and the building department. There's still a lot of development revenue left in the general fund that's really hard to parse out. It's little bits here and there. One of the biggies is sales tax revenue, and that's the one that I wanted to focus on. And what I've seen other cities do is that they either completely pull out the construction sales tax to prevent the general fund from, you know, relying on it for operating expenses. They use it for, you know, capital projects or, you know, just other one-time expenses. So I would like to put forward a proposal where, I'm not saying we pull out all of the construction sales tax, because there's kind of a baseline. You know, there's the ebbs and flows, but there's a little bit of a baseline of construction sales tax that might be reasonable to use for operations, but have a way to pull out into a separate fund. And my idea was have some kind of, you know, like a strategic projects fund, you know? Maybe we would fund getting the parks and open spaces plan up and running, kind of initiating that and getting a commission going. So that's just one idea. We have a comp plan coming up. We have some, you know, pretty exciting road projects. So just, just a way to pull it out to use it for one-time expenses that align with the priorities of the community and maybe mitigate some of the growth impacts. So, sorry, I have a child, like, trying to come in the door. I don't know what's going on. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. I'm going to put forward a proposal, and, you know, I was kind of thinking of a certain level baseline, and anything that we receive in construction sales tax over that baseline, we would just send to this separate fund. And then, anyway, I just wanted to throw it out there. I took longer than I thought. I apologize, but I don't like it when we get too in-depth in something in committee and the rest of council doesn't even know what we're talking about. So this was an idea I had, and it's been something I've been, you know, hoping to get implemented for a really long time, but our financial policy got a little bit derailed when we had some change in staffing on the finance director's side. So, anyway.
So thank you, Councilmember Napland. I think you all know that's a priority of administrations as well. I think it's, you know, I think the work you've done is great, and it's a good baseline. My concern is starting the work now before we get the municipal financial planner on board, because I think that if we create a new policy, we may be going back and backtracking it, and we just approved our budget. With the municipal financial planner, as soon as we get the interim city administrator on board, that's one of the first tasks, is to get that contract up and going. So I see it coming forward with that, you know, professional look and looking at all of our policies and identifying what we need for reserves and what we can do with that money. So my recommendation would be to wait until we've got the municipal financial planner on board and bring this in as part of the conversation in our long-term planning. Councilmember McHenry?
I just wanted to voice support for, you know, Finance and Administration Committee looking at that. It sounds really interesting, and, you know, whenever timing-wise that fits in, I'd support that.
Thank you. It's something we've wanted for a long time. We're going to get there. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, thanks. And just, just, again, to reiterate the importance of this, there's, you know, to me, there's two major aspects. One, we don't want Duval to be at the mercy of a boom and bust economy or, you know, or, you know, building or anything else that changes that's really out of our control to some extent, you know, it'll impact us, but we want to buffer ourselves as much as possible. And this type of long-term planning, when we know what kind of revenue is sustainable, when we know what kind of revenue is one, you know, one-time revenue, will just help us tremendously along those lines. Secondly, and something near and dear to my heart, as you guys know, is, you know, growth limitation. And we have to understand, you know, we can't put ourselves in a situation where growth begets growth. We can't put our financial system at the mercy of, you know, well, without growth, we can't do this, we can't do that, we can't, you know, sustain basic infrastructure or whatever. We need to be able to do that with sustainable funds. This is the bottom line in my, in my mind. And Mayor, as far as your comment, I would think there'd be some, maybe, in fact, I already know that... I, I would think there'd be some maybe, I, in fact, I already know that Director Mason has put, you know, put some things in place because she and I talked about that this last week. There may be some other relatively simple things that we can put in place to help differentiate between short-term or excuse me, between one-time monies and sustainable monies that may not be that big of a deal. And, you know, we may be able to do that sooner as opposed to, as opposed to later.
I appreciate that. My concern is our finance department, part of this is overloaded and is working on significant amount of work. If we were in the middle of a budget process, my viewpoint would be a little bit different. But we've got our work plan lined out and the municipal financial consultant coming on hopefully by June. So we still have a full year and a half based off of, you know, from that time, from the point of our budget being approved and to the next approval of a budget. And trying to make sure that we're lining up the work in the right order for our staff and for our consultants to manage. But I do.
Staff are in the best position to make those, make those.
Yeah, no, I, I really appreciate that. And it's, these are, you know, this is long-term planning. We've been talking for years about the fact that we can't, the city at some point is not going to grow at the rate we are. And all of this development for the past 20-plus years really has impacted our budget when it didn't come in as planned. And so Councilmember Reddick can attest to all of the tough decisions that have had to been made over the years. And the way that we've been budgeting last years is very, very conservative. And that's part of why we have a bigger fund balance than normal. In addition to the luck of increased construction and sales tax overall. So we will get there. It's on the agenda. It's on the work plan. It's just a matter of order of operations and getting the information and the steps in place to get there.
Sure. Good.
Councilmember Lingle.
Yeah, I, I definitely do not profess to know everything about a municipal financial advisor. I did get some information actually when I was a citizen. One of the things that I noticed, and this is one reason I would say that what Councilmember Napland is, is noodling, if I can call it that, on her tablet and her spreadsheet is that what, what I, the examples I saw were situations where after analysis, the financial advisors came back to the city in a very nice neutral way and provided options where something like this that she's talking about can be integrated in options. So I think a little bit of noodling and spreadsheets kind of gives us something to give to someone like that. And, you know, you know, procurement, I, I share the mayor's desire for procurement to get wrapped up soon. And so, yeah, I think, I think it's always good to do a little brainstorming and so it sounds like maybe there's support to noodle some more, spreadsheets more at Finance and Administration. And then, you know, and it, it's conceptual. I think we do still have to remember Dana's tie. Because she hopefully will be starting a new accounting system really soon.
Hopefully, with any luck, soon after tonight. Councilmember Hoag.
So I kind of think this information that Councilmember Napland is wanting to bring forward is something that should be brought forward before we even have a financial advisor in place. And I think that it would be beneficial for the financial advisor to see this. And I think that it would be good for our council to see these numbers as well. I don't think that, maybe I'm mistaken, Councilmember Napland, but I don't think she was asking for us to create policy or make any changes right now, just to have the facts and the numbers. I've looked at some of your spreadsheets before, Councilmember Napland, and it's an eye-opener. They're great. So I, I support what you're doing.
All right. All right. Thank you. So moving on to council committee reports, Finance Administration Chair Remington. You're on mute, Councilmember.
New, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We met for two and a half hours last week. We opened with discussion on OpenGov. Several questions raised about the contract itself. Not concerns about OpenGov and their ability to, to provide a good product, but we are in contract negotiations. Specifically those related to payment terms for implementation costs, payment terms for annual subscription fee, technical support prepaid hours and the terms of those, the module implementation and really a lack of a termination clause. It was pretty much if you signed the contract, it was 10 years and there wasn't a way out. Many of those had been answered prior to our meeting and we were real pleased to see that. But we did ask our city attorney, Daniel Kenny and Director Mason and Director Thomas to go back to OpenGov and specifically take a look at the termination clause. We were pleased to see that they did implement language that would give after the two years. And things were fully implemented. If for some reason we weren't pleased, we wouldn't have to stay with it. None of us see that happening, but it's still nice to have on these great big contracts to have some language. So I, we thought it was better. And that's in our packets that we received last week. In general, we like the 10-year. There were some concerns about the length, but we understand that if they were willing to go with a five-year cost additional money versus the 10-year. So there was dental support for the 10-year. What we're basically working on now is our procurement policy. Specifically, you know, we have some on-call contracts that were, you know, a piece of our discussion as well. On the procurement policy, we have two matrices. One of those matrix is designed to help tell the city when they need to go out for bids, more formal bids. And there's numbers provided by the state, but we're going through to make sure that we meet state law. And in some of those, we're making some adjustments, maybe a little more conservative than the state where we were required to go out for full bidding. But we're going to try to finish that up tomorrow in a meeting. And then hopefully all council members will receive our draft matrices. A second matrix that we're working on is, is approval levels. You know, as you see in many other parts of our, our system, there are some things that employees that are assigned something can approve. Some have to be approved by directors, some by the mayor, some by council. So we'll be presenting those to you as well. And again, these are in draft. We'd love to get your feedback as soon as we get that out. Because really by the end of March, we'd like to try to wrap up the language as well and get that done. So we have a procurement policy in place. I mentioned the contracts. So we have on-call contracts that are, are really coming to an end by the end of June. We had allowed the city or recommended they extend those no further than that. But we recognize that time's coming to an end. Well, some directors are going to get started immediately and going out and just simply doing RFP or RFQ for those contracts. We did recognize that trying to do every contract that we have all at the same time can be burdensome moving forward in the future. It's nice to kind of offset them so you don't have too much workload. So we told directors, mayor that, you know, they can take a look and decide which ones they, they should do the RFP RFQ on and which ones they might be able to, you know, just simply extend the contract and then go out for a full RFP RFQ later on. We're looking at Public Works contract matrices as well. Are looking at some specific numbers because these come in different categories, different types of contracts. And I don't want to get too much detail there. There is a lot going on. I think we have a great group working on it. It can be challenging. Our main goal is to meet state law and make sure that whatever requirements we have, that we're meeting those. But we also realize that we're a smaller city. We don't want it to be too burdensome. And certainly, you know, contracting takes a lot of time for the city. So we're trying to find that balance of meeting the law, having oversight and, and trying to be as efficient as we can. So we appreciate everybody's patience with us. That was a pretty quick overview for a two and a half hour meeting. But I, I hope to have some matrices out for you to take a look at with a little bit of explanation. And we encourage your, your feedback.
Thank you, Mayor Pretten. Moving on to Lanius, Chair Hoag.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did have a meeting on February 22nd. Councilmember Napland, Councilmember Lingle, Director Thomas, and I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce this right. Ocela Chavez, the Assistant Planner was at the meeting as well. And we spent quite a bit of time working on the community survey. I think some of you have already seen it. So I know that'll be going out soon. It's doing great. And Ocela gave us a really great presentation on conditional use permit. And she did a really good research on other communities and, and how they handle their conditional use permits. And and then we also discussed the Westcott Commercial Development Application. And I'm sure our Director Thomas will probably be going over details about that in her presentation. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoag. Does anyone have any questions for the chair? Seeing none, moving on to Public Safety, Councilmember Reddick.
Okay, we met last week and what we covered was the ILA that was approved by consent at our regular council meeting. So we discussed the process for recruiting community members. And then on that agenda was also police recruitment and the oral boards and hiring update. And Chief Hurt and Lieutenant DeBach are conducting chiefs interviews for five entry-level candidates. On February 25th, there was discussion about having currently four lateral applications for review and possible oral reviews in the next couple of weeks. And then Councilmember Schaefer is to sit on the upcoming interview panel. And Councilmember McHenry is to be the alternate. I did serve on that panel the last go around. And it's really, it's great. It's very interesting. And a good service to the community. The police chief transition, we discussed that. The mayor is working on employment contracts with Lieutenant DeBach. And we went through the timing of that. And then the emergency manager role, that was something that was, that the committee wanted to bring to the cow, but it needs further discussion with the mayor and her staff. So that is happening with the mayor and I'm sure once that gets ironed out, then we can talk about that at the Cowen Mudgee. So that's it. Any questions?
I, I will just add, Councilmember Reddick, for council's sake, I'm hoping to have something for discussion at our next committee of the whole regarding emergency management. You know, this provides potentially some opportunities for the city. And so I've been having discussions with the mayor Pretten and our Public Works Director and Police Chief. And we need to schedule a meeting with our employment committee to look at the details of that before we can bring it forth to Committee of the Whole. But we're hoping to get moving on that in the next two weeks. So thank you. And now we have Public Works Chair McHenry.
Well, our last meeting was February 10th, so I already gave an update for that at our last council meeting. But if committee members check their email, I think I've seen a meeting invite for next week for our next meeting.
All right, thank you. And then we had ad hoc committee's city council ethics policy. Councilmember Hoag.
Oh, our attorney, Daniel Kenny, has been working on the first seven pages of our ethics policy. So he's ready for us to meet. So Amy McHenry, I believe Amy McHenry and I will be meeting with him and then setting up an appointment to meet with you, Mayor, to go over it. So that's kind of where we're at.
I'm excited about that. Glad to see it move forward for y'all. All right. Next up is administration update. And I did realize I forgot something in my list. So just to let folks know, our committee did meet to review the applicants for interim city administrator. We were able to weed out some pretty quickly and narrow it down to four qualified candidates. All of them would be well-served on paper at the, at the city. And we're working to schedule interviews next week and then potentially work on employment contracts the week after. And with any luck, have a contract by the end of the month or the first meeting in April. Really what it boils down to at this point is making sure that we find the best fit for the city, the tasks that we have at hand. And I'm very optimistic. We had over 10 applications, which I was surprised about for an interim city administrator part-time role, but I think that lends to the current environment and folks wanting to take a break, take time off, folks that are in the sandwich generation or looking at changing direction before retirement and what have you. So I think we are in a good spot and really lucky that we received the crop of applicants that we did this time around. So I'll, I'll provide an update to council as soon as we have any more information for you. So thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And thank you for that update. I lost my VPN today, so I had no access for part of the day. So I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to prepare a quick presentation. But I wanted to give you a quick update. Out of community development, we've issued 97 permits to date. So that's a combination in January and February. And 23 of those were residential home permits. Our inspections obviously are really ramping up because we have a lot of permits out there that are under development. So we've had 495 inspections to date this year. That's quite a few. That's about two and a half times the normal. And we also have an additional 39 residential permits under review. And then a couple of commercial and TIs as well. We're expecting a couple of new projects to come in, including the church that was lost to a fire just over a year ago. They're going to come in with their permit. So we're really excited about seeing that move forward. We have kicked off the government facility planning process. Obviously, you know, we did an RFP and we had a strong pool of firms. It was really impressive. And there's a nice, robust committee. We are going to enter, interview four firms. Presentation interviews are scheduled for next Thursday. And then we should have a contract that'll come to council by April, but we'll do an update in the next meeting in March. And the mayor already talked about the city administrator, so I don't need to go over that. Oh, that was it for my administration update. Thank you, Mayor. Does council have any questions?
Sorry, I didn't realize I put myself on mute. So thank you, Ms. Thomas. It doesn't look like we have any questions, so we'll move on. We do not have a presentation this hearing, this evening or a public hearing. So we'll move on to our only agenda item of new business, Agenda Bill 21-25A, an ordinance amending the temporary use duration for discussion and/or decision. Ms. Thomas.
I should have kept my presentation up. I apologize for that. So good evening again, Mayor, Council and members of our community. A few months back, we adopted or actually really approved Ordinance 1271, which temporarily amended our temporary duration and amended 145202D and E. And essentially what was amended was the number of days that we allow for a temporary use to exist. And then the CUP process to add additional days. Again, you know, we're still in a period of COVID and procedures and our businesses would like to continue to be able to use their tents. And so I talked with our city attorney and with our community development team. And what we decided to do was to repeal Ordinance 1271 and then, then repeal DMC 1452D and E for six months. Because we have several permits that are getting ready, that are set to expire here in the next week or so. And the only way they can continue to go is to get a CUP and a CUP process goes to a hearing examiner and it does cost money. So what we want to do is temporarily over the next six months, not have a, a time period. I did get a really good question from a council member a couple of days ago, and I apologize, Councilmember Napland, for not being able to respond until later today. I was having just a VPN issue. But the question really was, if we do this, is that, does that then allow permits to, to be extended permanently into perpetuity? Is there any sort of like, do they stop? Do they have, do they have a stop point? And the answer is yes, there's two mechanisms. One of them is that they are only allowed for six months because they're also governed under. One of them is that they are only allowed for six months because they're also governed under the building code, actually the International Fire Code. And then also within the temporary use permit section out of the zoning code, and we're not repealing this section. It allows us to put conditions on the permit. So we would be conditioning the permit to say that it's only good for a certain amount of days in accordance with the new ordinance if council chooses to adopt it. And if we choose to adopt it, it's an interim measure. So again, we have to hold a public hearing within 60 days. So I can take questions from council.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Hoag?
Okay, so I have a question. Isn't this just a temporary ordinance?
Yes.
So should it say a temporary ordinance at the very top of the ordinance? Because it talks about it being an ordinance, but that is for temporary.
Mr. Kenny, I'll let you.
My video comes on. It means I want to say. So technically speaking, it's not a temporary ordinance. And don't excuse my language, but it's an interim ordinance, not a temporary ordinance.
Interim.
Interim ordinances are good for up to six months. And they're intended to allow you to work on what will go into place in a permanent way. So it's not that it's just a placeholder. It's intended to be the first step of multiple steps. And that next step could certainly be to go back to what we had. It could be to modify it a little bit to allow some more flexibility. But that's what the six months is for. And so it's an interim ordinance as opposed to temporary.
It is confusing because it's a temporary use duration. So I can see how the nomenclature would be odd.
Should it say interim on there, on the top, that it's interim? Or should, does that even, well, I guess not. It already says six months, but.
Yeah, so the sections down in the ordinance itself speak to that. And this one, just to add another layer of fun to it, is also an emergency ordinance. So it becomes effective immediately. And all of these things tend to get conflated when we work with these types of things. So interim means that it goes into place for six months. And you can do procedural steps during that six months, like the public hearing that Director Thomas identified, like going to Commerce for review. And then the emergency portion of it means that we need to get into a place, in place, immediately, rather than waiting the five days after publication. And so we're doing this one as quickly and with as few hurdles as possible. Immediately, you'll do them eventually.
I do have one more thing. If we're passing this tonight, I found a typo. I don't know if I should mention it.
Please do. I'll make sure to fix it.
It's just on the very top. It's missing an R and temporary on the third line, so you know. Thanks, Jody.
So Councilmember Schaefer and then Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. So it is an interim. If it expires with no further action on our part, on the council's part, then by default, we go back to what was there previously. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, good, good.
We will be looking at making a change because if it goes back to its original, it's 45 days. And then you can extend it a little bit more through a conditional use permit. But what we'd like to do is have it match the building code as well. So we're going to bring that through Planning Commission and then back through council over the next six months.
Great. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, thanks so much for getting back on my question. I think I still, it feels like it would be better to state that there is a limit to this temporary use permit. Just repealing any timelines just feels a little... I mean, I hear what you're saying, that staff could put on a time limit. But the reason we have code is to make it really clear that there's a time limit. And it feels... I don't know if someone who was reading our code or looking at this would understand that there was a time limit and that they'd have to go back and try to dig out building code or something. So I just don't, I'm curious why we chose to do it this way instead of just taking off the hearing examiner and saying that it can be administratively extended up to six months. Because it seems like that would accomplish the same thing. And then it would align with the building code instead of having to somehow know that building code limits it to six months. So even though we took it out, technically some other code somewhere else limits it. Anyway.
That's a good question. And I'm comfortable the way it's written because they still need to get a temporary use permit. We're going to put a condition on it, and it also has a building permit as well. So there's two mechanisms. There's going to be the temporary use permit because we didn't exempt them from the permit or the process. And we'll put the condition on it. And I think it is clean because we're going to associate it to the ordinance. And then we also have the building permit, which also has an expiration of six months. So I'm comfortable the way it's written.
So any temporary permit always would have a building permit associated, 100%. Okay, and the end date?
Is always, is always six months.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand. That makes more sense than that always the case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Ms. Thomas? Mayor Portem Remington?
Director Thomas? Most of these require an inspection, I assume, to begin with. We have ongoing inspections. I mean, is there any follow-up? Because I, you know, I see heaters in there. And I'm just wondering how often we go back to make sure they're complying with the code.
That's a really good question. We only inspect it at the front end. We don't expect it during the duration unless we observe an issue or we receive a complaint.
Is there opportunity in this process to add an inspection? You know, even every couple of months? I only ask because there is a certain danger when you're starting to add heaters and, you know, the exiting changes. I mean, there's just all these other issues that pop up. And, you know, one of those things catches fire. It gets pretty ugly in a real hurry. And they're usually right up next to a building. And so I'm just throwing it out. I don't need an answer now, but it's something I just suggest we consider.
I don't, I mean, we could add it as a condition to this. But I can also work with the building department and then just request maybe a monthly, you know, inspection where we go look at them. We don't have that many, so I don't see that as a burden.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council members?
Steve has a question.
Steve?
This is more so for Mr. Kenny to put us on the spot. If we were going to make some sort of inspection, would that be something we would want to incorporate into a note under the permit? You know, the state reserves the right to make inspections upon whatever, complaint or routine inspection for duration to be in 45 increments? Or do we need to add something like that? Or do we always have the right to go in? Because houses change all the time. Once we issue a certificate of occupancy, right? So I just want to make sure it's, I would suspect we would want it clear to any applicant that we could come back. And then maybe that might quell Mr. Remington's concern of perpetual change, which nobody's arguing doesn't happen. I'm sure of it, right? But how do we make it so we can go do that work and not be, you know, the bad guy? Like, hey, we told you so. We told you we'd come in. And so, this question.
So the first thing that I would want to do is look at the building code and fire code to see what's already in there. Because we don't want to needlessly duplicate. But it is private property. So if we're going to be entering for the purposes of inspection, we need to have permission or have that as part of an approval, for sure. Code enforcement, you know, a little bit different, but that's probably not what we would be doing here. We wouldn't be, and I mean, there could be a situation where you'd be doing code enforcement. But if you're just doing a periodic check, we would want to have authority to enter the property.
Councilmember McHenry?
Going off of Councilmember Remington's concern, is there any resource or FAQ or helpful hints that we can point businesses to who are going to be erecting these tents, just some safety tips or anything like that? I mean, it's kind of a newer thing that more people are using these. So I was just curious if someone had put together some info about that.
So right now, they require a permit and they actually require, we have to look at all the manufactured instructions for each permit that comes in. And then we inspect that to those specifications. But sometimes what happens is tents just get erected. And then we have to go out, you know, and knock on the door or give them a call. And they do what I call a post-installation permit. And then we work with them on that. So we don't have any fact sheets. And one of the reasons is because every, one of them has a different manufactured requirements. We have had issues honestly with some heaters. And so we have had to do some additional education within our community.
Yeah, I was just thinking if, you know, people get these tents up and they get inspected. So they have a green light, but then maybe they want to add some ambience and make it more cozy, add some string lights. You know, it can get a little complicated in there. So I was just curious if we, you know, in general, let people know to please be thoughtful about, you know, the safety of the patrons as they decorate the inside of these tents. I don't know how much that's happened, but.
Yeah, it has been an ongoing issue, not just for Duval. We're honestly, I think, one of the only cities that's really trying to keep them permitted. Many cities aren't even, they're just popping up and letting them go. So we're trying to have a little bit more of a constrained approach. We do talk to them when we are going through the permit process that whatever you're going to do, you need to communicate that with us. And we really want that communicated to us upfront versus on the back end. And so we do a lot of outreach, and especially with these tents. We don't, like I said, we don't have that many, but we have had, we have had some issues.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like there's still a little bit of questions. So I won't ask council if you want to suspend your rules tonight. And we'll go ahead and move on to unfinished business, Agenda Bill 21-13D, Westcott-Duval Village Commercial Application Extension Request.
So Mayor, I wasn't necessarily ready for us to go on. We have some permits that are expiring. And so if we're not going to approve it tonight, that's fine. But I need some direction on what I'm supposed to bring back to the ordinance.
Councilmember Schaefer? You're on mute, Councilmember.
Thank you. Does anyone have an overriding concern that we should not approve this tonight? I mean, I've heard some very good concerns, but nothing to me that would, I guess, prevent it from moving along tonight, at least from what I've heard.
Okay. Well, if council would like to move forward and suspend the rules, you're more than welcome to do that. Councilmember Lingle? You're on mute, Councilmember.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
All right. All right, any discussion? Seeing none. Oh, Councilmember Napland?
I think this is discussing on whether we want to suspend the rules. And so that is not what I want to comment on, so I will hold it.
All right. All right, all those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And I would be happy to entertain a motion on Agenda Bill AB 21-25A. Councilmember Lingle?
I'll make a motion to approve. Let's see, I got to go back up now on my chart here. I've got too many things happening here. What is it? 21? I got to go back. See, I was already on to the next work item. There we go. Here we go. Yeah, 21-25A.
Second up.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Lingle, a second by Councilmember Schaefer. And now discussion, Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I just wanted to show my support for what Councilmember Remington brought up. It seems very important to address. And if we move forward on this, I'm just wondering, you know, how can we address, you know, ensuring that we have the right to inspect it and not wait for a tragedy or a complaint? And I don't know if it has to be in this or if it's just we give direction to staff to try to work into a condition that would address, you know, being allowed to do an inspection, you know, maybe giving them forewarning. That would be something that I think legal would have to help with. But I'm willing to move forward with repealing it. But I do feel like what Mayor Protem Remington brought up is really critical.
Right, thank you. Mr. Kenny, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just say that, you know, nothing that's being done tonight is going to limit the tools that are available to staff already. And so this objective is totally valid and I think can be done with the tools, whether it's the conditions clause to put in that you have to allow a monthly visit or something like that in order to get the temporary use approval, or whether that's using the building code or fire code independently. We can find that tool. So if it's okay with you, Councilmember, I think that could be kind of directive that, you know, staff takes away from tonight. Because certainly agree that having safe use of these temporary uses during this time is paramount priority.
Thank you. Councilmember McHenry, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo and say that that was very well said. And I'm happy to move forward as long as we can work that in after.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Agenda Bill 21-13B, Westcott-Duval Village Commercial Application Extension Request?
It's actually.
I'm sorry, I did it again. That's what 12 and a half hours of meetings will do to you in a day. Sorry about that. Motion on the floor is approval of Agenda Bill 21-25A, Ordinance Amending Temporary Use Duration. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close, opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Sorry, guys, every once in a while I check something off when we're almost done with it. And I end up reading the next line. So moving on to unfinished business, Agenda Bill 21-13D, Westcott-Duval Village Commercial Application Extension Request.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just need to share really quick again. So we have been talking about this particular request now for almost a year. It has taken us a bit of time to work through it on our end, but also on the applicant's end. During COVID, it was more difficult for them to get a report that they needed to get to us. And they did get that updated, but it wasn't until almost fall. And then we started kind of slowly pushing that through council and the Land Use Committee. We've had quite a few discussions, and they've been really robust, whether it's at council or at a land use committee. But now that we have a land use committee, we've been able to dig in a little bit more and have discussions. And I've also had some really robust discussions with our city attorney, Daniel. So he's here to assist us as well. And so what we're looking at is really a request from Westcott to defer their commercial development application and the build-out of that commercial lot. So that's parcel C1. And what we've been thinking about as a group is what would the parameters be of essentially kind of the conditions of their request? So if we're going to approve it, what are we asking for in return? And how long would we give them? What would that term be? And what would that look like? So they originally obviously requested the full five years. And we pretty early on said, you know, we're not comfortable with that approach. And we were really looking at maybe, you know, a two or a three-year deferment. But at this point, we're already. But at this point, we're already a full year into that one year. And so when I talked with Daniel last week, he's like, I think we should probably really look at, you know, do we look at three years? Time flies. And so this is where we're at right now. The city then has an option after that period of time to extend it up to the full five, the full five years. We'd also like to see a market analysis update once a year, a marketing plan once a year. And then one item that Wes got asked that we include in it is if they're in some sort of negotiation, potentially a, you know, a purchase and sale agreement, that if it was towards the end of that extension, if we would extend that a little bit further. And I think council and the committee felt like, yes, we could do it, but we could still never extend it past that five years. So you'll see, I updated that in the agenda bill. And then one item that we talked about in the land use committee was starting to put kind of just a premise out there to the applicant that says, we still expect you to come in and do this project. So we want to see you come in with a pre-application for a commercial development by a certain period of time. I don't know what that date should look like. That's, you know, a council decision. I did put in June 15th of 2022, because I think by the time we get this completed through Planning Commission, through hearing and coming back to council, we're probably looking at June. So that would be one year after we approved an extension. So I've finished with my quick presentation. So if there are any questions, I can certainly take them.
Councilmember Schaefer.
So Laura, help me understand, are we actually recommending a three-year extension at this point then? Or is that still undecided?
It's, it is somewhat undecided because you, this is the choice of council. What we've done is we've put two or three years in. Last year, we were definitely more in tune with the two years, but we're already a year through that. So they would already have to start a process, a process of moving that forward. So we thought about giving them that additional year. So that would be for a total of three years, but really it's only two.
Yeah, get two, two from, two years from the present, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the other question I got is a little bit more general, I guess. What, it's not clear to me, at least, what happens when this extension runs out? You know, obviously they come back to us and say that they want, want even longer. But, but say we don't grant that, what, what happens then? They still own the land, is my understanding, but they would not have permit to proceed on development of that land? Is that, is that correct?
So if they, if they don't proceed and, and it expires, the two years or the three years expires, then we would write, I would write a letter with our city attorney that says to, you know, that says to Wes Scott, it is expired. Our expectation is that within the next X day, say 60 days, that you come in for a pre-application. And then if they don't do that, then we would look at contractual issues with the development agreement.
Okay, good. But all, all this while, the, the land still legally belongs to development.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't belong to us. So they, they could sell it and, you know, the obligation gets transferred to somebody, to some new owner.
Sure. And one more, you know, one more, I guess, general question. And, you know, th- this is a little bit difficult for me to phrase correctly, but is there a perception that Westcott's been dragging their feet at all? I mean, I, I understand there's been, you know, factors with COVID pandemic and, and things like that. But I also read their current, their, their original proposal was to have their parcels for sale in 2016. And we're five years beyond that. Is there any perception on our part that, that they've just moved too slowly?
I think that we would agree that they have not moved along this project as quickly as we all thought and really agreed to. You know, we've been working on this project for several years. They, they had, you know, a couple of hiccups in getting started. They, they've had preliminary plat for several years now. Like I think, I want to say six-ish years. And it took a little while for them to get to final plat. And then it took them a while to get building permits and approval. And they ultimately sold off the residential component. And while they're fee simple lots, they're going to be apartments now. We also have a second partner, which is DFA, you know, so they own one of the lots. So we've worked with them about this time last year to allow them to keep their temporary facility on the commercial parcel. I think that sometimes when you have a residential developer, they're not, they're not always prepared or know how to build out the residential component. It's a mixed use district. Our code intention is that they build out concurrently. And if they don't build out concurrently, you enter into a development agreement that then says, we'll allow you to build it in a future phase. Well, that future phase is, is passing us by.
The, and the buildings we see going up today, the ones that are relatively close to the highway, are those residential buildings?
Correct. Those are 99 attached units. And so they're going vertical right now.
Right, right. Okay, so very little activity, if any, on the commercial side then.
There is no commercial activity at this time.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to get clear on that. I also saw, which increased my concern even a bit more, I saw an analysis in the, in our packet from a commercial broker. And there was actually two letters from him, one pre-COVID and one post-COVID. But his pre-COVID analysis was, this wasn't a commercially viable location. And that was before COVID. Now that was, you know, that was well after the land had been acquired and, and, but it was, when was it? That was, I think, January or very early of last, last year, which brings more concern on my part about how quickly or if, and then anytime soon, we'll actually have commercial buyers in there.
Thank you. Councilmember Lingle.
Make sure I'm not on mute.
You're not.
Oh, good, thank you. The, the land use committee hasn't finalized their meeting minutes, which I got out to them, I guess it was yesterday. So I just want to make this comments because, that I participated in since that hasn't been adopted. But one of the things that we've talked about in the past is that residential, residential is intended to be somewhat of a risk mitigator with commercial on these kinds of sites. And my comment at the land use committee, which I'll repeat now, is that Westcott decided to sell off the residential without having the commercial built, which means that they gave up their risk mitigation and elected instead to be standalone commercial. And one of the other things that I've been concerned about in, in the, in the request, it's, you know, they say a basic market analysis. Well, I don't know how that's defined. Now, I think I recall that Director Thomas said there, we do have some definition of that in, in Duval. I'll let her address that if, if necessary or whatever. But if you look at the opinion dates, I'll go down, go back up, I guess, to the documents. The, the last market analysis letter was done September 11, 2020. And it really doesn't say that much. It's just basically what that letter says is, this is my opinion. And I guess I would counter that. I've seen economic information in just the last few weeks that suggests that maybe that information from last year is not up to, up to where the overall market is in, in our, in our vicinity. Okay. So, and then the other thing is in that same letter, they referenced us as only having 8,300 residents, which, okay, that was fine as of 2020. But when you consider how long it will take for this commercial development to be built out, and it's going to be, it's, it's going to be several years out, no matter what. And we know from our own pipeline that we're going to have a lot more units. And by the, using the three-person calculation that's in our water treatment analysis, you know, we're real, that puts us, you know, at 10,000. And I, and we do have storefronts that, you know, people want to rent. So I'm not sure that, you know, I would agree with Collier's, oh, but what is that now? How old is that? What is that, seven months or something like that analysis? I would think it would have been a little more forward thinking. And so if I'm understanding the recommendation here of staff, they have to come in with a pre-application by 2022. Is that not correct, Laura? Am I understanding this? June 15, 2020? And, you know, so they kind of get a little bit of a free year in this mix. But I think that that's very generous overall. And so I definitely personally, you know, support them needing to come in with a pre-application by that date. I, the city has been extraordinarily flexible with Duval Village, in my view. And so we need, really need them to either do a project, get a partner, or, you know, find, find someone who wants to buy it. But we really need this commercial to have for our sales tax base. And I don't want to represent this as anything than what I've said, but other members of me might want to comment.
I just to augment Councilmember Lingle's information, our policy does not define a market analysis. So we were kind of left with a couple of paragraphs. But what I can tell you is that I have been in conversations with one of our other developers that has mixed use land off of Big Rock Road. And they just completed a market analysis and their market analysis says that the time is, is there. And so they're looking at a full marketing plan and we started receiving phone calls. So, you know, I think that it's, it just is, are they, are they invested?
Can I add one more thing on this? Which is, this is just for everyone's information. Some real estate report that I got just last week was very interesting because it said, you know, everything, all this concern about whether what people would continue to work at home and whether office would be viable in the area, you know, in King County. And what the current thinking they heard, you know, in there, in the industry, is they don't expect to see more than 15% actually continue to stay at home. So they are, you know, in King County, their belief is that office is still very viable. And yes, for bedroom community, but I guess I feel like commercial will be viable.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridniki.
Oh. Um, so for over a decade, we've had this conversation about commercial. And never have I ever seen a positive, let's go build it, commercial from anyone. So I don't know, I'm at the point for me personally where I'm a little bit impatient. And we do need commercial. And I'm not going to be looking at reports or, because those type of conversations have happened for over 10 years now. And if I go by that, nothing's ever going to get built here. And there's a dedicated piece of property out there. And we don't want to just sit there, nothing happening. So as hard as it may sound, I'm more supportive of the idea that however we can to move this forward is where I'd like it to go. Because no one's going to jump up and down and say, yeah, I'm going to build some commercial. There's all these excuses of why we can't do it. And so I've sort of lost my patience on that.
Councilmember Napland and then McHenry.
Okay, that's quick. I, I think what's concerning to me is there were actually less people in Duval when they agreed to build the commercial. And so we've actually grown significantly since then. There's a lot of projects that are investing in adding residents. So I, so it's, it's kind of confusing. You know, they didn't sign an agreement that said, you know, I get to build out all the residential, but I'm only going to build the commercial if I can make X amount of money off of the commercial. I mean, that's not the deal. It was, it's a package. You build it concurrently and the city already made an agreement to extend and let them have longer. And now we're giving them more. So I really think the three years is generous. The expectation was that, you know, originally it would be concurrent, there was an extension as part of, you know, the development agreement gave them more time. And now we're giving them even more time. And, you know, the idea that, you know, you have to reach this magic 10,000, you know, City of Duval is very small city limits, but we have a very large population just across our city limits that really is Duval. And so we, we definitely exceed this magic 10,000 people that they keep talking about. So I'm always kind of confused about, you know, where they, where they come up with, we're not 10,000 yet. We're way more than 10,000. It's the technicality of whether they're on one side of our city limits line versus the other. So anyway, I'm excited to see something happen and I think the residents would love to see it. And it was part of the plan when, you know, we zone things, that this would happen. So.
Thank you. Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, I totally agree with everything that's been said by my fellow council members. And I just wanted to add that knowing the business owners in our community and commercial spaces don't stay available for very long. And we have a very talented and diverse community full of people who have home businesses and other ventures and, but these are not people who necessarily have the ability to build up an empty lot into a commercial space. So it's very much needed and I just definitely agree with everything that's already been said.
And I, I'm just going to echo this. I think the last time Westcott came, I think we, we pointed out that there is need. And in fact, there are people that want to open up businesses in Duval today that can't find the space. And so they're going elsewhere. And the reality is if a commercial investor invests and works with somebody to make the right space, it's going to get filled. And if the, if COVID is any indication on how our community supports its businesses, if there is anything else, I, I don't know what else there would be. Because while other cities tanked, our city has thrived. And what we're seeing region wide is businesses closing down in the big cities and then starting to have more economic activity in the smaller cities. People are valuing the communities they live in more. And I, I just don't see, you know, this has been going on for over 20 years. Councilmember Bridniki has been involved in this longer than I. And it's time to just get it done. Enough excuses, just get it done. So Ms. Thomas, or did we have the final version? Correct me, remind me, did we have the final version in this packet? And if so, we, we could take a vote this evening.
We can't take a vote. We have to go through Planning Commission in the hearing. Yeah, no, that's okay. It's, it takes a little bit of process. I think what I was really looking for, for this evening was just, I don't want to say I had not, but some consensus that it looks like we've kind of got it packaged correctly. And now I'll go move that on through the Planning Commission process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Remington.
Sure, I want to dive into this. Very few times do I feel like we're being played. But I think we played us pretty well. They came at the last meeting, accused us of violating our, the terms of our agreement with, without even showing us where we did that. They're the ones that are really in violation. Early on in the project, they told us we were dragging our feats and giving them approval to start their building when they hadn't even connected to the water system yet. So there's no way we could give it an approval. So I just have a really sour taste in my mouth. Now, having said that, I'm also a realist. So if we said, forget it, build it, they're not going to build it. So if we said, forget it, build it, they're not gonna build it anytime soon. They got nothing ready. And so, you know, I, I like to be a good player with developers. I want developers to say Duval is a good place to, to work with. And um, I agree with Laura. I mean, they've already burned up one year of this thing. It would take them a year to put all their plans together and. Get things ready and then it would take them a year to build it. So even if somebody new came in tomorrow and we said, well, thank goodness we got somebody new, it'd probably be at least a year and a half to two years with permitting process and everything else. So. You know, I, I just. The realist part of me says, why not approve it? At least gives them a chance and maybe they'll move things forward. You know, i- if we don't approve it, nothing changes, you know? I mean, we send a message. Uh, but that's about all we're actually doing in my mind. Uh, nothing's gonna change. They're not gonna throw us a, you know, building, you know. Come in with an application and, and say, okay, well, we were just teasing. Here it is. I don't think they, they've got one. Maybe if we say no, it puts pressure on them to sell it. You know, they've already sold off their moneymaker, so maybe they'll turn around and sell this off. Um. So I, I, I don't know what games are being played here. Uh, we don't have any good choice. You know, pardon me, wants to say, yeah, tell them no, put it together. But it doesn't change anything. And um. You know, I, I want to put us in a position where we have some control. Um. And uh, and work with them on coming up with a plan. We want it to be successful. I just don't think there's any good options for us. I, I don't mind extending it, you know, just to have something in writing and, and work through it. But um, you know, I'm afraid that if we just turn the thing down and just say, no, build it. Uh, we're just not gonna get anything for that. So. No matter how we vote, I think we're. Not in a decent spot in force. You know, if you're asking me what I'm suggesting now, I, you know, I, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not very happy with the. Lack of cooperation or being able to trust what they have in agreement with us and our community. But having said that. Some companies have a tough time. Uh, they're obviously uh. Struggling and um, you know, i- if we think that they can still play well in the sandbox continuing it. Cause either way, they're still a partner. They own the property. So anyway, I'm sorry, I didn't add much to this conversation other than to maybe complain. But I want our citizens and others and Westcott themselves to understand that we're not happy. And we're not happy because of something we did. We're not happy because they've made. Some promises that they aren't following through and it affects our city. It affects our income. It affects our planning. The amount of time and the energy that our planning department has put into this is just wasted time. And I'm not pleased with any of it. You know, so what, I could actually go either way. I just. Want to make sure our citizens understand what this issue is about and why we're not happy. Westcott has not been a good partner. And uh, I, I think it's too bad. I think they've got some good projects out there, but this one isn't one of them.
And Kim, Mayor Pretend, well said. Councilmember Schaefer.
So I just want to make sure that, that I understand what I think our options are here and, and none of them are good. Uh, per, per council members or everything's a comment, but uh. Well, I guess in the most extreme option, we wouldn't give them any extension. Um, but more realistically, we could give them a one year. Well, two-year extension, so they go reused one year. And uh, let them know that they need to uh, reapply again. Uh, for an extension. In one year. Uh, now they don't want to do that. I, I, they've made that very, very clear, but at the same time, this would send a strong message to them. That we're not pleased with, with, you know, their performance so, so far and, and their lack of really close partnering with the city. We can give them um. A three-year extension, which again is two years from, from now. And uh, that would uh. Give them more options, although based on their past history, I'm not sure that would do anything more than, than, you know, give them more time to drag their feet. And. A shorter option, I guess, uh, excuse me, a shorter uh. Uh, option, say one year from now would uh. Four seventy position of, of either, you know, putting up actually, you know, creating some activity out there or. Selling the property uh, to someone else that would uh, in turn uh, get the development uh, moving. And uh. That. You know, that's a tough position for us to be in as, as a council. But uh, I like the idea of uh, keeping them on their toes. We always have the option of giving them another extension at the, at the end of, uh, end of the year. Uh, but I like the idea of giving them a shorter term extension, not a longer term.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, I think we've kind of uh, talked this one up a lot. I, I think we're all frustrated. Um, so if everyone's okay, we've got um, ten minutes until we need to extend our meeting. I'm thinking we might be able to get through the next agenda bill in that time, knock on wood. So if we're okay, we'll move on to Agenda Bill twenty one dash twenty B, authorize the mayor to enter a ten-year agreement. With OpenGov for financial accounting software as a service. And then I will let uh, Ms. Mason lead this um, and provide some updates on the contract negotiations.
Evening, Mayor, Council and meeting attendees. Nina Mason, Finance Director. So tonight, let me share my screen. Tonight is council's second patch review of the ERP um, software contract. Uh, with OpenGov. And it, the city council or the city attorney and staff has worked with OpenGov to address some of the concerns that have been brought up by council. So um, I'll just go over this real quickly. So it's still for a ten-year term. A total initially. A hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in implementation service costs was due upon contracts that signing plus. The first year of the annual subscription cost. That has been changed. So the implementation costs have been split into three different payments, fifty percent due. On March eighth and then twenty-five percent due on August eighth. And twenty-five percent due on December eighth. And then the annual subscription costs, which do include sales tax. Um, are still the same. And so the total contract cost is of just over eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that includes sales tax. Total cost for the biennium is three hundred and seven thousand dollars. And then total budgeted for the biennium is three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So we're just under that. And that's in part due to. A reduction in the im- implementation costs because the city is gonna go with a um, a fresh start. Software implementation, which, which means that OpenGov will migrate um, data into the reporting platform instead of into the financial software itself, saving the city some money. Um, and then I'm gonna actually turn this over to our attorney, who is gonna go over the changes to contract.
Yeah, great. So um, we have a couple of slides here for some of the latest revisions that you can see in your agenda packet. Um, they're uh. On the screen, but then also uh, in different areas of the agreement. So the first one is in the statement of work. This stems from a, a comment that was made at the committee meeting. Um, wanting to find some way to create some deliverables uh, for that initial payment. Um, so originally that payment, as you recall, was a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars straight up front, as you saw on the last slide, that's got split out. Um, between payments, March eighth, August eighth and December eighth. Um, the statement of work has a estimated timeline of fifteen months. And so what we tried to do, and again, trying to. Get what we can um, uh, to make this work is. Give a, a bit of a buffer on the estimated statement of work, uh, completion timeline of fifteen months. Putting that at twenty-four months and then assuming that, that the city doesn't do anything to uh, blow out that timeline. Whether it's a change in the scope or whether it's a delay caused by the city. They should be done with that statement of work, which is. If I recall correctly, it's thirty-some odd pages worth of a statement of work. Um, by the time that twenty-four months is done. And if they're not, the city would get back any of the prepaid unused uh, hours that were uh, expended by the city. Because that would have all been paid according to the timeline by Mar- or December eighth. Um, so that, that all will be in their possession and then they still will be working on the statement of work completion. And so this is as far as, as we could get to get some sort of termination. Um, uh, Councilmember uh, uh, Mayor Pretend Remington made a comment earlier. I, I couldn't, I, I don't know if I misheard it or, or if I need to clarify. This two-year period is for now, it's not a uh, option to terminate absent um, them not completing the statement of work. Um, and then the ten-year period will be in place with uh, fairly limited termination rights beyond that. And so just want to make that, that particular point clear. And so that's what this language is, is trying to say. And it's, yeah, and then we can go to the next slide as well.
I'll get there.
Yeah. And so here, I've got it on my screen here too, so I can read it a little clearer. Um. And so one thing that was pointed out in the committee meeting, which was a great catch. Um, is that at the end of the um, statement of work, and I'm gonna go to it on my screen here as well, so I have it in front of me. Um. Is uh. Sorry, I think it's partially there. Um, so it was, it was related to uh, change orders. And so there were some examples of when changes might be required. Um, and um, the attorney for OpenGov was uh, quite frank that he did, he didn't really see a need for those provisions to be there. Uh, wasn't entirely sure how uh, what the, what the need was when the broader group got together. Um, the need for these particular bullets and it's the strikeouts at the bottom of the page that you can see on the screen is what I'm referring to in this moment. Um, tho- those weren't necessary in this situation, so they agreed, no problem to take those out. And then agreed to have the language in red to just make it clear that they will complete the statement of work uh, without the need for a change order. Um, a- as described in the statement of work. And that's again, absent anything that the city may cause. And so this was just to clarify their, the understanding of the parties and their obligation to get that work done. Again, we have that in the other section as well, that they will complete the fifteen-month statement of work at max at twenty-four months, months, um, just to give some buffer. I, I saw one question maybe coming, but I can move on to the next slide. Okay, perfect. Um, let me move this other way. Okay. Um, okay. And then so the, the last one in uh, I've got three different things on my screen here. So. The, the last one is uh, in the contract itself. Um, and let me, sorry, I'm just trying to scroll back up on my screen to find it in the contract. And sorry, I'm almost there. There it is. Um, and so this is in uh, section two point three of the contract itself. So we've looked at both the order form. We've looked at the state, uh, the statement of work and now we're in the contract itself. Um, and. So this was to clarify, they, they, they had said that it would, the prepaid hours need to be uh, spent within a year. We're given a two-year window in order to complete the statement of work. And of course, even the estimated statement of work uh, timeline is fifteen months. So we didn't want to. Prepay upfront within uh, the, the initial period and then have work still going on and lose those hours. So anything that's outlined in the statement of work. The date, February ten is the incorrect. I believe that's supposed to be the twenty-sixth. Um, and that'll be corrected. Um, and so anything that's related to that will be done within the two years. And so I think that was the, the, the final slide that we had on kind of the, the, the final revisions. And I, and I will just say that OpenGov um, was uh, eager and um, happy to jump on the phone. Uh, into the evening and to resolve this. Um, they're very excited to, to work with the city and to address these issues. So I do think that we've addressed all the issues that were raised. Um, you know, could, could they, could they be um, more perfect or more city beneficial? Sure. Yeah, they absolutely could. Um, but I, I could always find a way to make it better for you. Um, so I, I do think that we found some, some good, some good middle ground here, but it, it would be for you to consider um, what you think about it now.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Um, Mayor Pretend, you're on, you're off of mute, so I'm assuming you have something to say.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I, I just wanted to thank our city attorney, Daniel, and uh, again, Laura and Dana. For really working on this for us. Um, I, I'm excited about it. I think this product is outstanding. I think we're gonna have a great relationship. Uh, my goal would be to see Duval be a shiny example of using this online tool. Uh, for our citizens that may not be as aware, this really improves our safety as well. A lot of our stuff is on our own server and. And that has potentially some vulnerability and, and not, no backup. And now we're gonna have all that uh, fixed. We'll, we'll have a, a solid backup protecting our city data, financial information development. So anyway, I, I'm excited about this. Um, I appreciate OpenGov working with us. Uh, that's what negotiations is about. We certainly are trying to protect our citizens. I'm really pleased with the language changes. Uh, they mi- might not have been everything that I would have wanted to write in there, but that's again, part of negotiations. So I'm excited to uh, uh, move this forward and get it approved. Thank you.
Mayor Pretend, are you making a motion?
Um, I don't know if others are gonna comment first, uh, but uh, I'd like to make sure everybody gets to weigh in and say a few words before we uh. Put it on the floor, but that would be my intent.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you. The uh, the, the, this is, I think, a significant improvement over what we previously saw. I think it, you know, continues to, you know, have a part, you know, close partnership with OpenGov. Uh, and. At the same time protects Duval um, more. So that's uh, that's certainly something uh, I, I appreciate. Uh, this is kind of half a question, half a statement. In the uh. Let's see, in the notes, uh. It does uh, outline uh, Daniel, as you said, I think a schedule for three payments, March eighth, August eighth, December eighth of the, all of this year. But right under that, there's a statement, the payments are due on the dates above, but are meant to coincide with the scheduled start. Of the following implementation work. Uh, to me, that's, that's a weak statement. Uh, the, the, the meant part, but are meant. Uh, is there a way or would it make sense? I mean, you guys have been. Involved in this so much more than me. So I really, I'm looking for your opinion on this. But there, is there a way that we can say? You know, the, the schedule of payments is, is March eighth, assuming you have, you know, these, these milestones started, which be, you know. Citizen Service Week, the. Chart of Accounts, General Ledger, Accounts Payable, et cetera. Uh, as opposed to the way it's currently uh, stated.
The, the meant in the um. In the agenda bill, those are my words, but in the contract, it, the payments are due on, on the due dates. Um, but they are, you try to coincide them with, with when they thought they would, OpenGov thought they would complete those tasks.
Ri- right. And that, that was also my interpretation uh, of this. But I, but really what I'm asking is. In addition to saying March eighth, eighth, they, you know. For, for example, if they haven't started this work yet. Then the payment would be delayed um. Until they do. You know, the, the work that's directly outlined below, uh, below the dates.
So, so I'll just, I'll quickly jump in on this one. Um, so, so there, there's certainly a topic that came up with the committee as well and, and with staff. Um, I think independently and as a group. And um, I think it's tough because there, there is no. There's no external calculation of time and cost for individual line items in the statement of work. Um, that is. You know, publicly or, or available to us. That, that, they, 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 they bake everything on their end and a number comes out. Um, for that statement of work. And so when, when we requested more deliverable-based payments, they were able to provide. Three clumpings of um. Work from the statement of work, um, kind of in a broad sense. And then was it, then we're able to provide these dates uh, in, to correspond to that. Um, but we were not able to get, you know, um. There's no, there's no hours attributed to each thing or even to each category. So, so it just can't be broken down that way. We did make that request and it certainly was a committee priority. Uh, to seek that. And so it's just, it's just not the way that they operate um, to, to get that granular on that topic.
Okay, okay. Yeah, no, the good, that, that does help my understanding. I just want to point this out. I just want to point this out as a risk, and it may not be a big risk, but nonetheless, it is a risk that that, you know, we're contractually being tied into specific dates as opposed to milestones related to the statement of work. So, you know, the the, so the, there may be good reason, it may not be an issue, but if some of these things haven't been started, we still owe them the money. Even even so.
Agreed and and definitely a topic that has come up.
Councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, I want to repeat one of my points in in the committee meeting, which is that we know that one of the risks we're taking is this is the first time that the whole OpenGov suite is being implemented in the state, you know, with their new finance package and all that. But something I said in the committee meeting, and I firmly believe is that they have a lot of reasons to perform for the city of Duval, not the least of which is our mayor. And I really believe that is a is a very practical observation about where Duval is positioned and and our role and the state and the the relationships and the committees and the organizations that we are a part of. So there are a lot of reasons for OpenGov to stay on task. And contractual or not, yes, the contract has its challenges, but there's a lot of reasons for them to perform that are just practical reasons. And so I'll stop there. I think I think I summarized what I believe.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Napland and then councilmember Hoag.
Just real quick, I, you know, all the different comments, these were all discussed for quite some time in the committee, and I want to thank staff and our attorney for working so hard and advocating and trying to get as much as they could to protect us and you know, it just comes down to this is, this is what we have. And as councilmember Lingle stated, it's in their best interest to perform and for us to have a good relationship. So I'm prepared to support this. I feel a little nervous about it, but it's it's one of those things, I think we pushed as hard as we possibly could. And we even found, you know, other contracts that other cities had to say, hey, see, you did it here. Can't we do this? I mean, it, we tried and at the end of the day, I I feel excited to work with OpenGov. I know our staff is excited. And we just have to move forward. I think that's where I'm coming from. So me approving this contract doesn't mean that I am happy with every detail of the contract because clearly, you know, I mean, there's compromise that happens. But I know everyone worked really hard on this and I was appreciative of it.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Oh, councilmember Hoag.
So I appreciate that that OpenGov is willing to work with us on, you know, not having to pay the whole amount upfront, so I appreciate that a lot. What I've kind of been focusing on, what I've been trying to understand and read in the contract is the termination clauses. And the one specifically, the seven, it's section seven, term and termination. Basically, I think that OpenGov could terminate us for really any reason. When you look at seven point two, I know that there are some termination clauses that you were mentioning, Mr. Kenny, tonight that, and I don't see those. Am I, I'm missing them in here, the ones that you talked about. So I I guess I just really want to understand the terminations better before we sign, you know, agree to it. And am I seeing the whole contract in this packet? Or is there something, are there additional changes that I don't see in this packet?
Of the whole thing. I'm scrolling through seven point two. Looking right now to see if I can just bring it up so we can all look at it. Is that in the statement of work or is it in the service?
It's in the contract.
Yeah. Contract itself. Oh, oh, the software services contract. Okay, so let me just share it real quickly. Since I bring it up, seven point two. Okay, here we go. Let me share my screen. And then I'll make this a little bit bigger so everyone can see it. How's that? So right here.
So I I guess you're looking to me. So so a material breach is going to be the only way with a failure to cure that either party can get out of it? So I I I would be curious where you were looking, councilmember Hoag, that they could get out of it anywhere and and happy to to discuss that, but you know, it it's it's a very limited opportunity for either party to move on from this agreement.
I guess, could you explain to me what that, what material breaches means then? Maybe that's the terminology that I'm not quite understanding.
So a material breach is going to be a, you know, a a non non incidental breach, you know, so like a failure to give notice on something is typically going to be considered non material. Failure to perform, failure to pay. In some contracts, failure to have insurance or something like that might be a material breach. You see a a lot of you know, like a franchise agreement has all sorts of opportunities for material breach. You didn't restore the ground or something like that. Here, you know, you'd have to go through in a particular circumstance to consider what that might be, but certainly the big ones in either side are, you know, their their systems are not available to the city for a period of time. I would consider it to be a material breach. That's what we're paying for. Or if they never, never did the trainings or or the transition to in the beginning, certainly us, if we don't pay or something along those lines would be material breaches. There is the opportunity to cure within thirty days. So for example, if if they were to fail fail to give a training or to respond in a certain amount of time so that we can functionally use the product, but they were able to cure that within thirty days to make sure that that's taken care of, that's the intent of this. So it's not an immediate termination. There's an opportunity to make it right. And so and again, the the termination language was something that we, you know, identified because it is a ten year term. And so what we tried to do is address that initial period as best we could to try to try to make sure that you guys are going to be off on the right foot with with the transition and the trainings to make the products work. And then they still have to provide all of that and then the city still has to pay.
Thank you. And councilmember McHenry?
I appreciate all the changes that were made and I think staff's really excited about this, which makes me happy. So I'm ready to move forward and I'm, I think I'm the last one to say anything. So if no one, or maybe I don't know if councilmember Brudniky has, but I'm ready to make a motion if no one else has anything to say.
Councilmember Brudniky, did you want to add anything to the conversation?
No, I've been ready for quite a while, so I'm ready to go forward.
All right. Then councilmember McHenry, please make the motion.
I move, we approve Agenda Bill twenty one dash twenty B, authorizing the mayor to enter a ten year agreement with OpenGov for financial accounting software as a service.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. So we have a motion by councilmember McHenry, a second by councilmember Lingle. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And now that that votes held, I just want to share, remind the public as well that this this isn't just financial software, it's our building and permitting and utility billing and a public a public budget transparency tool that's going to allow people to go in and look at everything with the city's finances with a touch of a button. And this is really three years in the making from OpenGov being a newer company carting out their their budgeting and transparency tools to really growing and building relationships with communities across the country, including the city of Duval. And it's always a risk when you go out on a limb, especially as the first. But I am very confident in this company's abilities and I think that not just our staff, they're going to benefit greatly from this, but our community is going to benefit and that it's going to be it's going to be absolutely amazing to have data from software that we can count on and we can trust. As well as, you know, being able to council members, being able to pull individual reports on things or staff being able to pull reports, taking pressure off the finance department so they can work on other priorities as well. It's just a huge win for the city and thank you all for all of the hard work that went into it. We've had some heated discussions on it. We've had some great discussions and we got to where we needed to be. And I'm very grateful. So thank you all for the support of this long term project. Mayor Portem?
One thing I don't think we said during the process during budget, we budgeted a certain amount and this came in under budget.
Did.
You know, and assuming it stays under budget, I couldn't be more pleased. It's always nice as a city and councils to be able to say, yeah, we worked this out and it's under what we budgeted.
Yeah, this is great news. So thank you all. And unless there's any further business, we are adjourned. Bye.
Bye, everyone.